So bear with me, it's been a long summer. And so coming back into this, it's gonna be like, oh, how's this gonna go? Do I remember how this went for a whole semester, right? So, so coming back into it, but not just a refresher for myself, but for everyone here, we'll pray. And then I want to kind of do a quick review and overview of the class. It'll only be like five minutes. We all know how that goes. We're not wagering anything on that.
Have you ever watched the movie Interstellar?
I have. If only time worked like that right here. So, but, but yeah, so, so we'll, and also do just a, just a another quick review into four, because four and five really do go together. And I don't want to make it so redundant. So there's actually going to be new material added on to your notes from four. I'm really excited about that too. And then we'll get into five, which truth be told, is one of my favorite chapters in all of Revelation, and I would even say in all of Scripture. So yes, I will put that much on that. So I am really excited to start with five for this semester. And Lord willing, this will be our last semester of Revelation. But once again, no wagers, we're not putting anything on that. That's right, everybody's laughing like you, you are not responsible at all for any of that. So it's, but you guys asked great questions and I just can't help to go off for 20 minutes on it. So, but all right, let's start with a word of prayer and then we will jump in. Lord God, I thank you for bringing all of us back here and, and the inclusion of new members and just to come together to study your word. And not just any word, but Revelation you gave to the Apostle John. A revelation that has helped to shape the church over the last 2,000 years. A revelation that haunts some and, and gives, gives others hope in the midst of just the troubles of life. That during this time, as, as we start, as we go back over four, chapter four, and then into five, that Father, you would speak to our hearts, that your Spirit would cry out within us of what it means to worship you. And the endless reasons for why, why we get to worship you. And why you are so deserving of worship. We pray that this time we'll bring you glory. That would draw each of us nearer to you, nearer to your heart. And that would draw us together as a fellowship, as the body of Christ, as your people, a kingdom of priests. So Father, we pray that your Spirit would guide and direct us through this study. And that you receive all the glory. We pray this in Jesus's name, amen. All right, so just to review a little bit, rules for the class. I felt like I needed to go back over this. So wait for questions until Q and A time usually. And it doesn't take very much for me to just say, okay, does anybody have any questions on that? Now, if I'm not keeping temperature right and like, just kind of, just weave at me a little bit, it's okay. Well, we'll get there, just, we're not, don't just blurt them out. We'll, we'll go for raise a hand, right? So keep questions brief and on track with the topic. So we're talking about four and five. We don't need to be talking about beasts yet. We don't need to be talking about, you know, any, some of the other stuff coming up in chapters later on. So we will stay focused on the material at hand. Questions only, please, no sermonettes or lectures, especially on why I'm wrong. We can talk about that some other time. You can email me, you can pay me a visit there in the office and we can just talk through it. And I am, I love to hear new theories and different things like that. But now is not the time or place. Poor David has to edit this before it gets uploaded to YouTube. And that would just make his job so much tougher. So, no cross talk, I don't want to play referee. So once again, just another piece of this is, you know, if somebody's asking a question, I'll be the one answering it. We don't need an answer from the other side and disagreement and just, it's chaos. We don't need that. And then this is not a class for conspiracy theories or establishing the date of the rapture. Just putting that out there, right? So that is not going to be in view. And so we definitely don't want questions that are leading towards that. Because, because that might get embarrassing. Cause I might have to answer that, so. All right, so any questions on the questions or how to ask questions or the rules for the class?
You're trying to get it shorter.
That's right, that's right. So, okay, by way of review, Book of Revelation, singular. There's not an S on the end of Revelation. When we talk about the Book of Revelation, I know, I know here in the Hoosier State, it is so tempting to put an S on the end of that. Revelations, we've all done it, we can just admit to it. But it's not there, it's Revelation, singular. Was probably written during the time of Domitian, which he ruled, you know, Emperor of Rome from 81 to 96 AD, or Trajan, 98 through 115. And I generally think that it's post Jerusalem temple destruction, the first Jewish revolt that happened in 70 AD. That tends to be like a dividing line among scholars of whether Revelation was written beforehand. And so you find that usually with a preterist interpretation, meaning everything is historical and it happened leading up to the destruction of Jerusalem and the temple. But that doesn't need to be the case. And so I believe that a lot of this was written after. But once again, I am of the mind, if you disagree with me, I'm absolutely okay with that and will not lose sleep. So Revelation contains epistles or letters, right? There's seven wonderful letters, very confrontational letters in most cases from Jesus, Jesus himself, right? So then that makes Jesus the number one letter writer in the New Testament. Is that right? No. So, at least to churches, right? So prophetic writings and a writing known as an apocalypse, which in the Greek means to uncover, reveal, or lay bare. That's what apocalypse means in Greek. And so this apocalypse is full of apocalyptic imagery. And so that's, which, that's kind of a fun play there because the word apocalypse has taken on its own meaning to insinuate the end times. So you have a revealing, but then it's referring to, or it's including all of this end time or eschatological imagery. So eschatology being the study of the end times. Or study of last things. Speaking of theology, so there are a few, I listed off like seven or eight when we first started and you'd have to go back to the first class to listen to that or read into that a little bit more. But I just want to highlight a few that are going to really come up in four and five. And then really pave the way for the rest of the book. So the first one being is theocentric. So the Book of Revelation is very theocentric. It possesses a distinct theology of God. It's also deterministic. So these things are being declared to happen. God has determined this. John Goldenjay refers to this as the fulfillment of God's intent. God reigns and God will continue to reign for eternity. The certainty that God's triumph will come is an encouragement in affliction, a stimulus to faithful living and a reason to focus on what will matter in the new age, the age to come. Howard Marshall refers to this as the victory of God. Revelation 19 celebrates the victory of God over this evil system and the reward of God's people in terms of their taking part in a banquet where the guests also figure as the bride of the Lamb. So, and then that kind of dovetails with Richard Baucham's thoughts on the Book of Revelation as it being written solely as encouragement to those suffering persecution and about to endure martyrdom. So once again, that deterministic idea. Third, a high Christology, Christology, the study of Christ. So a high Christology is a very reverent view of Christ. And so this is of God declaring himself. Then Christ is echoing the same attributes that are given to God, almost separated by a few verses, sometimes it's found in the next chapter. And so we'll see this in chapter one, verse eight, and chapter 21, verses five through eight. We'll see something referring to God, but then it'll be brought up again just a little bit differently in reference to Christ. And so we see it in chapter one, verse 17, as well as chapter 22, verse 13. And so there are actually seven such patterns throughout the Book of Revelation. What a coincidence, right? Seven. And you're going to hear that a lot, right? It's going to come up even today. So worship is directed to the Lamb, once again, on this high Christology. Worship is actually directed to Jesus. Most things that we see God doing in this book, Jesus does too. Baucham, Richard Baucham, says that Christ's suffering, witness, and sacrificial death are in fact, as we shall see, the key event in God's conquest of evil and establishment of His kingdom on earth. Even more than the judgments which issue from the throne in heaven, they constitute God's rule on earth. Christ's presence with His people who continue His witness and sacrifice is also God's presence. And this is illustrated by Christ walking among the lampstands. Isn't that beautiful? Oh, man. So then finally, in theology, we have the church. And so Marshall, Howard Marshall, once again, human beings sharply divided into two groups. Those who follow the Lamb and those who yield to the enticements and temptations of the satanic forces. That's, that's the exciting stuff that you guys have to wait for, right? So we get through all the theology and stuff and we're like, Luke, can we get to the good stuff? It's coming, it's coming. So these are not two groups who are fixed by divine fiat. So kind of echoing back, right? But kind of a little bit of a twist on the deterministic idea. These are not predetermined groups. There are calls to the ungodly to repent. And there is no indication that these calls are other than genuine. Why would there ever be a call to repent if it was already determined? It's not, so that is open and available. Believers are sealed with names written in the Book of Life, Revelation 13:8 and Revelation 17:8. But in Revelation 3:5 is referenced to names not being blotted out of the Book of Life, suggests that they could be. Hence, calls to persevere and repent. It's a good thing we don't just stop there, right? So the main theme, according to Howard Marshall in his New Testament theology, the purpose of the Book of Revelation. Am I going too fast? No, good?
A little bit.
A little bit? When I take a pause and start something else and I see people still scribbling, I'm like, okay. So, all right. The purpose of the Book of Revelation is to prepare God's people. Eternity, resurrection, new everything, for the difficult future that lies ahead of them, persecution and martyrdom, and to issue an evangelistic appeal to those who have not yet responded to their witness. Let me read that again. The purpose of the Book of Revelation is to prepare God's people for the difficult future that lies ahead of them and to issue an evangelistic appeal to those who have not yet responded to their witness. I found, I mean, just all throughout last semester, it's, it's easy to do that going through the church, the letters to the churches, right? Where almost, this takes on a almost devotional feel, right? It's like, oh, that could be talking to me, or oh, that could be talking to like this church or whatever else, right? And it's interesting because I think even as we move forward, there's still going to be that devotional aspect. Just as we're reading it, it's like, I mean, it's, it's really like, it's, it's my own devotion just weighed in the balance of what I'm reading. Where does my allegiance lie? Is it with Christ or is it with the world? Because we don't always paint it as easy as like, is it with Christ or is it with Satan? We don't do that, right? We're just like, oh, is it with the world? I'm being distracted by the world. Isn't that softer? It's a little, that's a little easier to digest, right? It's a little easy to like, try to like, live in both worlds. But really, as we're reading through this book, like our, our toes are going to get stepped on. I don't know about you guys, but my toes got stepped on like last semester. Plenty of times. And so even as we move forward and we're dealing with more of this apocalyptic imagery, don't be fooled by it, like it all has a point. And when we dive into the context, and we'll talk about that here in a second, it is going to like, become that much more relevant. It is going to be that much more in our faces. So I'm not trying to scare anybody off, listen, if next week only half of you show up, I'm like, no, just kidding. But it's still, it's one of those things to really just wrestle with. So, okay, so how are we approaching Revelation? What view are we going to take? So this church does not have a statement on eschatology other than we're expecting, we're looking forward to Jesus's return. That's it. And I guess you could throw in the resurrection, we actually have a statement on resurrection. But other than those two, there is nothing on when He's coming back or what view we take of Revelation or anything else like that. But I want to read this quote from Baucham. It would be a serious mistake to understand the images of Revelation as timeless symbols. Their character conforms to the contextuality of Revelation as a letter to seven churches in Asia. Their resonances in the specific social, political, cultural, and religious world of their first readers needs to be understood if their meaning is to be appropriated today. So what this is, what I'm talking about here is really just contextual study. John was writing as an encouragement to first century believers. This wasn't something that was sealed up, like what Daniel heard, right? Until the time of the end. No, in their minds, the Messiah has already come. This was the end times. The end times kicked off 2,000 years ago, ask any of the apostles, right? Like that is what their mindset was, that's why they were going to the ends of the earth in their lifetime. They were going because they were expecting Jesus to come back. And, and really, it was only later in Paul's life that he had to address this with some of the churches, like the church in Thessalonica. And he had to say, hey, look, I know some have fallen asleep, but no, you didn't miss it. You didn't miss the resurrection, you didn't miss Jesus coming back. We're still looking forward to that, we just don't know when. But we still need to live like He is coming back tonight. And so, so as we are reading this, John is writing to the church. He is writing to people who are still holding on to this hope, but they don't know when he's coming, when Jesus is coming back. And so he, they are about to go through persecution and depending on when it was written, they were enduring that persecution at that time. And so they needed that encouragement. And so by God's grace, He gives this vision to John to pass along to all these believers. And so it is for us, and I mean, just like as we were going through all the letters, we saw how relevant, how contextual the information in those letters really were. I mean, boy, Jesus was hitting them right between the eyes, right? Or giving them an attaboy, whichever. And so, you know, it's one of those things that like, that was very, very contextual. Why would the rest of the book be any different? And so there is very clear imagery that John is employing here that, in what he sees, right? And so what God is revealing to him in a way that John would understand. And so he is communicating that to these first century readers. And it's almost in code, right? And so when we see it, when we read it from that first century perspective, we can understand what that is, what that looks like. And when we do that, then it can be translated into what that means for us today. So we're taking a more principled approach instead of playing conspiracy theory and figuring out who's the one that's going to have a head wound and recover from it and, oh, that's the Antichrist. And so that's how we avoid playing games like that. And so we can actually have a principal approach because there is a much bigger issue at hand. And that is, how are we living our lives day in and day out? It goes back to allegiance. So if everybody's worried about a mark of the beast, but yet you are not living out the fruits of the spirit or living really in a very humble and service mindset in following Christ and evangelism and making disciples and everything else, then, then what are we doing? What are we doing? And so there is one of those things where it's just, as we pull this together, it's a contextual approach that will make sense as we go through it. It might be a little bit different than what you're used to, than what you've maybe been exposed to. But it will pay off in the end. So, all right, any questions on any of that? All right, okay. You're absolutely welcome to ask questions, it's okay. So, all right, everybody ready for a chapter four review? Real fast, okay. So from Baker Exegetic Commentary on Revelation by Dr. Grant Osborne, we look at chapter four, verse one through chapter 16, verse 21. So just keeping all of this in view. So there's a further contrast within chapter four, verse one to chapter 16, verse 21. For it breaks naturally into two sections. Chapter four, verse one to chapter 11, verse 19. Beginning with the throne scene centering on the Father and the Son. And then chapter 12, verse one to chapter 16, verse 21. Beginning with the conflict scene centering on the false Trinity, the dragon, beast, and false prophet. In chapter four, verse one, a door stands open in heaven. And in chapter 12, verse one, a great and wondrous sign appears in heaven. Throughout chapters four and five, God and the Lamb are worshipped. While in chapter 13, verse four, chapter 13, verse eight, and verse 12, and 14 through 15, the beast is worshiped by his followers. The throne of God in chapter four and five are contrasted to the throne of the dragon in chapter 13, verse two. The great battle between God and the forces of evil dominates this section, but for the beginning, from the beginning, the outcome is sure. As chapter 12, verse 12 says, the dragon goes out filled with fury because he knows his time is short. So the sovereignty of God is absolute. Still, the battle is terrible, for it is also between the heaven dwellers, the saints, and the earth dwellers, those who follow the beast. The people of God will undergo terrible persecution from the evil powers, but the pagans will undergo terrible outpourings of judgment from God. Here again, there is a contrast. The purpose of the persecution is to destroy the people of God, but the purpose of the judgment is to call the nations to repentance. So an outline for chapter four, one through four, or verses one through four, is the throne room. It's a description of God on his throne encircled by 24 thrones with elders on those thrones. And verses five through seven, there's seven lamps that equal the seven spirits of God. And we're introduced to four living creatures. And in verses eight through 11, there's a worship of the four, worship by the four creatures and worship of the 24 elders towards God. So one through four is the throne room, a description of God on his throne. And it's encircled by 24 other thrones with elders on those thrones. And we're not identi, the elders are not identified. And I know that was a big discussion last time. It doesn't say who these elders are and what, how they got that position. Verses five through seven, seven lamps equal seven spirits of God. And we're introduced to the four living creatures. Verses eight through 11, we have worship of the four creatures and worship of the 24 elders. All right, now, I'm going to take a little excursus here into the book of Daniel. So if you could, please turn with me to Daniel, chapter seven. I bet you could have guessed what chapter. Now, it's going to be a little bit of reading here, so please bear with me. In the first year of Belshazzar, King of Babylon, Daniel saw a dream and visions in his mind as he lay on his bed. Then he wrote the dream down and related the following summary of it. Daniel said, "I was looking in my vision by night and behold, the four winds of heaven were stirring up the great sea. And four great beasts were coming up from the sea, different from one another. The first was like a lion and had the wings of an eagle. I kept looking until its wings were plucked. And it was lifted up from the ground and made to stand on two feet like a man. A human mind also was given to it. And behold, another beast, a second one resembling a bear. And it was raised up on one side and three ribs were in its mouth, between its teeth. And thus they said to it, arise, devour much meat. After this, I kept looking and behold, another one, like a leopard, which had on its back four wings of a bird. The beast also had four heads and dominion was given to it. After this, I kept looking in the night visions and behold, a fourth beast, dreadful and terrifying and extremely strong. And it had large iron teeth. It devoured and crushed and trampled down the remainder with its feet. And it was different from all the beasts that were before it, and it had ten horns. While I was contemplating the horns, behold, another horn, a little one, came up among them. And three of the first horns were pulled out by the roots before it. Behold, this horn possessed eyes like the eyes of a man in a mouth uttering great boast. I kept looking until the throne, until thrones were set up." I kept looking until the throne, until thrones were set up, and the Ancient of Days took his seat. His vesture was like white snow, and the hair of his head like pure wool. His throne was ablaze with flames; its wheels were a burning fire. A river of fire was flowing, and coming out from before him, thousands upon thousands were attending him, and myriads upon myriads were standing before him. The court sat, and the books were opened. Then I kept looking, because of the sound of the boastful words which the horn was speaking. I kept looking until the beast was slain, and its body was destroyed and given to the burning fire. As for the rest of the beast, their dominion was taken away, but an extension of life was granted to them for an appointed period of time. I kept looking in the night visions, and behold, with the clouds of heaven, one like a son of man was coming, and he came up to the Ancient of Days, and was presented before him, and to him was given dominion, glory, and a kingdom, that all the peoples, nations, and men of every language might serve him. His dominion is an everlasting dominion which will not pass away, and his kingdom is one which will not be destroyed. As for me, Daniel, my spirit was distressed within me, and the visions in my mind kept alarming me. I approached one of those who were standing by and began asking him the exact meaning of all of this. So he told me and made known to me the interpretation of these things. The great beasts, which are four in number, are four kings who will arise from the earth. But the saints of the highest one will receive the kingdom and possess the kingdom forever, for all ages to come. Then I desired to know the exact meaning of the fourth beast, which was different from all the others, exceedingly dreadful, and its teeth of iron and its claws of bronze, and which devoured, crushed, and trampled down the remainder with its feet, and the meaning of the ten horns that were on its head, and the other horn which came up, and before which three of them fell, namely, that horn which had eyes and a mouth uttering great boast, and which was larger in appearance than its associates. I kept looking, and that horn was waging war with the saints and overpowering them, until the Ancient of Days came, and judgment was passed in favor of the saints of the highest one. And the time arrived when the saints took possession of the kingdom. Thus he said, the fourth beast will be a fourth kingdom on the earth, which will be different from all the other kingdoms, and will devour the whole earth and tread it down and crush it. As for the ten horns out of this kingdom, ten kings will arise, and another will arise after them, and he will be different from the previous ones and will subdue three kings. He will speak out against the Most High and wear down the saints of the highest one, and he will intend to make alterations in times and in law, and they will be given into his hand for a time, times, and half a time. But the court will sit for judgment, and his dominion will be taken away, annihilated, and destroyed forever. Then the sovereignty, the dominion, and the greatness of all the kingdoms under the whole heaven will be given to the people of the saints of the highest one. His kingdom will be an everlasting kingdom, and all the dominions will serve and obey him. At this point, the revelation ended. As for me, Daniel, my thoughts were greatly alarming me, and my face grew pale, but I kept the matter to myself. Whoo, there you go. All right. Well, thanks for bearing with me on that. But it's important because what we're going to look at now is a comparative structure of Revelation four and five with Daniel seven. And so this is actually coming from, actually Heiser points this out from Greg Beal's commentary on Revelation. Greg Beal and McDonough. Oh, it's commentary on the Old, New Testament use of the Old Testament. There you go. So that is all those numbers in front of you. So, okay. So, yeah. So obviously, I mean, 14 points of comparison there, right? Like, that is not insignificant. From one chapter to really, I mean, when you read in four and five, it all just seamlessly goes together, right? Honestly, if you don't feel like being social or take, you know, when we take a break here in a second, when we get back from break, we're going to read chapter five. If you want to read chapter four, I highly encourage that. And so I'm not encouraging you not to be social or whatever, but you know what I mean. And so, but still, like, it just reads just right into it, and it's just so beautiful. Okay. So one other thing on this, both visions, Daniel seven, Revelation four and five, both visions also contain the image of a sea. S E A. Daniel seven, verse two through three, and Revelation four through four, Revelation, chapter four, verse six. Both visions also contain the image of a sea. From the comparison, it can be seen that Revelation four and five repeats the same 14 elements from Daniel, chapter seven, verses nine through 28, in the same basic order, but with small variations that result from the expansion of the images. So we're actually like taking Daniel's vision and going just a little bit deeper or having a little bit more clarity within the vision. On the, the image of the sea? Sure. Daniel seven, verse two and three, and Revelation, chapter four, verse six. So one last thing on Revelation four. Okay, yeah, we can do this. All right. So just looking at the time. So Dr. Heiser from his book, the Revelation in the Old Test, or Old Testament, Book of Old Testament, the Old Testament in the Book of Revelation. There you go, man. So Dr. Heiser utilizing research done by Bruce Molina on the genre and message of Revelation, Star Visions and Sky Journeys. That's a title that just reel you right in. Or me, anyways. Points out the possibility that the imager we encounter in Revelation four, the image we encounter in Revelation four is astrological, referring to the zodiac. Jewish astrological beliefs do show up in Second Temple Jewish text, and it's not necessarily an adoption of paganism as it was their way of organizing or reading the sky. There's even zodiac mosaics being discovered in ancient synagogues. Anybody that's a fan of Chuck Missler has maybe heard his teaching on the Metzeraf, the Hebrew Metzeraf. And so it's basically taking a lot of the image that we see, like within the zodiac, and basically it's the gospel in the sky. It's a really interesting teaching. Now, this is in no way condoning astrology or any stuff like that. But in the ancient world, and really up until about 100 years ago, there was a lot more importance put on the sky. Whether if you were traveling, I mean, journey, think of the age of exploration, right? I mean, when you're out to sea, there's not a lot of landmarks. There's none, right? So they're using the sky to tell their direction, what time of year, all kinds of different things. And so this is one of those things that has been handed down and that we see an overarching adoption without the association of paganism. This was just in reading the natural world around them. Now, there's a few points here that we see coming into play. The only reason I'm bringing this up, other than it being fascinating, is that we're going to have some more imagery come up in a few chapters that also falls in line with astrological symbols or symbolism. So kind of interesting stuff. Okay. So number one. So Molina's argument states, "The throne of Revelation four and five is heavenly, i.e. is said to be in the heavens." So Revelation four, verse one, two. So in speaking of the heavens.
You had to do that one again.
Well, it's just, yeah, it, the throne is in heaven. So think of heaven as in, like, in the sky, right? Number two, God's throne is situated above the firmament, the solid dome over the earth in ancient cosmology. "The firmament created in Genesis, chapter one, verse six, that separates the waters below it from those above it." And we read in Job, chapter 22, verse 14, that God walks upon the vault of heaven. And in Psalm 29, verse 10, says, "The Lord sits enthroned over the flood," or "over the waters." Number three, in Revelation, chapter four, verse five, meteorological phenomena emanate from the throne, flashes of lightning and peals of thunder. Consequently, the sea of glass before the throne is likely to be understood as the firmament. So that might be a little bit of an alternative interpretation, or maybe just one just never thought about. Number four, given the cherubim imagery of Ezekiel one, repurposed in Revelation four corresponds to the four points of the Babylonian zodiac and astral significance to John's throne description, and the 24 elders would make sense. So basically, the four living creatures being the four points on a compass. The 24 thrones and elders would thus correspond to the 24 divisions or hours that surround the central throne of God. So remember, it's not like the throne, and then all the thrones are to the side and around it. No, the throne is in the middle. So think of like a clock. It's the center point with the thrones all around it. So as opposed to standing before. So the thrones being around instead of in front of. So Job, chapter one, verse six, chapter two, verse one, chapter, Daniel, chapter seven, verse 10, all having thrones or people or individuals in front of God's throne. And then even as opposed to it being to the left or right, we see that in First Kings 22, verses 19 through 23. So what we're reading in Revelation is completely different than any of those. Why is it different? Especially when we've seen all these other comparative writings. So this unique encircling of the celestial council members therefore refers to stars encircling the throne of God in the heavens. So for Molina, this arrangement depicted the rotating cycle of the zodiac signs. And so Molina cites the comments of classical writer Diodorus Siculus in his second book, chapter 31, verse four, paragraph four, "whose writings date just before the Christian era in favor of this approach. Beyond the circle of the zodiac, the Babylonian zodiac, they designate 24 other stars, of which one half, they say, are situated in the northern parts, and one half in the southern. And of these, those which are visible, they assign to the world of the living, while those which are invisible, they regard as benign, adjacent to the dead, and so they call them judges of the universe." So the wording here, judges, fits the context of Revelation four and five, as it's a divine council scene convened to render justice in the last days. Because if, if you didn't know, that's what we're reading, right? Like, this is all a setup for judgment. And we've kind of been, you know, touching on that, but four and five establishes the right to judgment. And so if John is communicating to the people of his day in a way that they would understand, it is God at the center of this, who is the master of time and space and all of the cosmos, right? And it's he alone that gets to determine judgment. So the ultimate meaning that we see being pointed out here. Because when we get into these judgments, I mean, these aren't small little things. This is, it gets big. And there's mastery over elements. And that is coming from God. So, all right. Any questions on that? We have one on Zoom. Okay. And I trust your discretion. Uh-oh. TV plugged in? Oh, there we go. Okay. Mentioned that the book of Daniel was in John's Bible. John would have read Daniel's Revelation. Do non-believers use this against the Bible? John is just repeating what he read from Daniel and/or have issues with any inconsistencies between the two revelations. You know what? I've not read that as like an argument against John's revelation, like, oh, he's just copying, you know, stuff because, well, like what we said, there's enough new material even added on to the original material, right? And mind you, like, we talk about this from a literary perspective. Let's all remember, it's the same revelation giver. I mean, if, you know, somebody's complaining, well, like, well, he's just copying. Well, no, it's the same source. Same source, right? You know, and now we're not talking about Daniel's source material. It's the source, the one giving the vision. The same one that gave Daniel a vision, gave John a vision. And so, yeah, if the information matches up, well, that would just make sense. And so, and I think like, I've not actually used as an argument against it because even at a very surface perspective, what John was writing was an encouragement to those suffering persecution. So if John was, he wasn't writing of Revelation that the Lord gave him, if he was just compiling, doing his own Bible study and saying, man, it is rough out there, and everybody needs some encouragement. I'm just going to do a, you know, compilation study here throughout the Old Testament, although he wouldn't have called it the Old Testament. And so pull this together so I can send it out to encourage everyone. Well, right. Okay. From a secular literary perspective, there's still nothing wrong with that. But that's not what we have, and that's definitely not the claim of the book and of the author of the book. And so what we have here is a vision being given to John to record for seven churches. Because remember, this is originally getting distributed to these seven churches in modern day Turkey. Who are carrying the brunt of this persecution at this time. So, yeah. No, it's a good question. I mean, it's always good to kind of, kind of step out of our own Christian ease, our own churchiness, and just kind of be like, oh, how would somebody else look at this? But generally, it's not a thing that comes up. And I think by and large, when most, most people just don't get into Daniel or Ezekiel or some of these other, you know, more visionary aspects of scripture. They just don't, but everybody's heard of Revelation and a really a lot of the scary stuff in it, just because we've grown up in a Judeo-Christian culture. So it's kind of hanging there in the background. If nothing else, there's the Left Behind movies. Yeah. Does anybody have any questions? Boy, that was a lot of material. That was pretty dense stuff running through. So if any questions on that, once again, not an advocate for astrology or anything like that, but it's good to understand just the ancient world and some of the perspectives on it. So, yeah. Yes, sir. On the last session, last section there. Number five was the 24 thrones Number five was the twenty-four thrones and elders would thus correspond to the twenty-four divisions or hours that surround the central throne of God. Oh! Oh, I'm so sorry! Squeezing five in there, right? Oh, boy, I'm sorry about that. Here I'm more concerned about being labeled a heretic, and I forget number five. But yeah, so obviously that corresponds to, you know, the division of twenty-four hours in a day and so on and so forth. So, so, yeah. And part of that was just like looking at the Babylonian influence, because Babylon did have an influence on the entire ancient Near East. Right? I mean, even like, basically, and that influence doesn't just go away when Greece comes in a few hundred years prior, or prior to Jesus, right? So about three, four hundred years prior, you have Alexander the Great moving through, and they definitely leave their mark. But you have just cultured layers, right? Layers of culture that just begin amassing, and something like the zodiac or astrology could maintain its own integrity or take on Greek elements, right? So it doesn't just like, oh, out with the old, in with the new. Usually what you see is a certain level of syncretism. Right? Everybody excited about Christmas? Just kidding. Come on! I figure I was far enough away, I could make that joke, right? So, but, you know, it's just one of those things that over time and different cultures and stuff, it just, it all, it creates layers. Like a Yule log, that's right. Hope everybody's picking one out right now. No, just kidding. All right. I'm kidding, totally kidding. Absolutely kidding. So, all right. Any other questions?
When you say zodiac, are you referring to the same type of zodiac that we're familiar with? Or would it be something more Near Eastern Jewish Babylonian?
So there are some... Yeah, 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 the, oh, yeah, the question. Oh, I'm trying. Okay, yes. So when I say zodiac, am I referring, like, would they have had a similar zodiac than what we imagine today? With some of the images and the stars and different things like that? Right? So from my own studies, like, from what I've seen, and even like reference to Missler's Metzgeroff study, the, there are a lot of those similarities. They have been carried across cultures, and so they are by and large the same. But there are some slight differences. Because I don't know about you, but if you look up in the sky and you see a cluster of stars, you can be like, I could make that out to be a unicorn instead of, you know, a virgin with a child, right? Or, you know, or carrying a couple ears of corn. And so, you know, so there's certain different interpretations of that or different imagery, but by and large, it's it's the same. There, something, and that will, this will come up later on. There was a dragon, but then that has fallen out of our own, like, our own, not mine, but like, what we think of as the zodiac today.
Are the names the same?
They didn't speak English. Some of the references. It's just the first night. But anyway. No, and as far as, like, if you were to translate them, some of them are similar, just because there is a certain direction, kind of like the virgin, as opposed.
Or like the unicorn.
For the record, there is not a unicorn zodiac, in the zodiac. So, yeah. So I think by and large, most of them are, would be the same. Yeah. Any other questions? I won't be that sarcastic again. Really? All right. Okay. Everybody ready for chapter five? All righty. Ah, here we go. Okay. Now, just so everybody knows, if you didn't know before, I am reading from the New American Standard Bible in 1995. So if you notice, as I'm reading, it's different than what you're reading. That's why. Different translation. So there's nothing wrong with that. And actually, you can appreciate those differences, because whoever was doing your translating or whatever team of translators was working on it, they interpreted certain words differently. That's okay. So just something we should all be aware of and just know that New American Standard, never mind, never mind. Okay, all right. Knew where that was going, okay. So Revelation, chapter five. So we conclude, we finish off four with worship, really. Let me start at verse seven. "The first creature was like a lion, and the second creature like a calf, and the third creature had a face like that of a man, and the fourth creature was like a flying eagle. And the four living creatures, each one of them, having six wings, are full of eyes around and within, and day and night, they do not cease to say, 'Holy, holy, holy is the Lord God, the Almighty, who was, and who is, and who is to come.' And when the living creatures give glory and honor and thanks to him who sits on the throne, to him who lives forever and ever, the twenty-four elders will fall down before him, who sits on the throne, and will worship him, who lives forever and ever, and will cast their crowns before the throne, saying, 'Worthy are you, our Lord and our God, to receive glory and honor and power; for you created all things, and because of your will they existed and were created.'" So that's where chapter four leaves off. Yahweh is being worshipped for being the creator of all things. Yes, sir?
So, "holy, holy, holy is the Lord God Almighty." It says, "holy, holy, holy," three times. You don't usually see that much anywhere else in text. Is there something significant to the holy being three times? Holy, holy, holy? To make it more significant or more emphasis?
Yeah, it's a re-emphasizing of it. You could get real churchy and just say, oh, it was for each member of the Trinity. That's not really in view here. Like, Jesus is going to have his spotlight. The Spirit has had his spotlight, you know, kind of throughout with the letters and everything else. So it's just more of that re-emphasis. Yeah. So to do something three times, you know, you are stressing that.
It sounds better in songs.
It sounds better in songs, that's right.
So then, more question. On verse 11, so is it reference to God the Father and Christ at the same time? Or Christ, because it's saying Lord, and then, and God?
Yeah, so, so going off of verse eight, "holy, holy, holy is the Lord God, the Almighty." And so, mind you, we're dealing with Greek, not Hebrew, right? If you were to have that in Hebrew, it would be like Yahweh, El Shaddai. You know, this is going through the, just, I mean, this is the highest name, right? This is God himself, the Father. And what we see stressed on down here, because remember, like, Jesus is going to come into view, but he's not yet. So I would say that this is directed at the Father, even if it is including Lord. Lord still means master. That, like, it is speaking to his authority, right? Lord and our God. And so even God here is not a name, it's a title. So then this follows with, "to receive glory and honor and power, for you created all things, and because of your will they existed and were created." Always, like, it's the Father's will. Jesus seeks to do the Father's will. And so I don't think that would be immediately shared with Jesus. Like, he would need to be mentioned prior to this.
Yeah, but for example, thinking of what Paul says, "in him were created all things."
Oh, yeah.
So it's kind of what Paul says, linked to that particular description.
I'm just not convinced that Jesus is in view in this, because it is the Father's will that things were created, and even though the Father creates them through the Son. So it originates in the Father's will and by the Father. So, oh, no, we'll still end up Trinitarian, don't worry. But it starts with this right here. Because even everything we see in chapter five will originate and come from the Father, but through the Son. So, all right. Any other questions? And I'll do better about repeating the questions. So for everybody on Zoom, I apologize. David's just shaking his head. So, all right. So let's read through chapter five. "I saw in the right hand of him who sat on the throne a book, or scroll, written inside and on the back, sealed up with seven seals. And I saw a strong angel proclaiming with a loud voice, 'Who is worthy to open the book and to break its seals?'" "And no one in heaven, or on the earth, or under the earth, was able to open the book or to look into it. Then I began to weep greatly, because no one was found worthy to open the book or to look into it. And one of the elders said to me, 'Stop weeping. Behold, the lion that is from the tribe of Judah, the root of David, has overcome so as to open the book and its seven seals.' And I saw between the throne with the four living creatures and the elders, a lamb standing, as if slain, having seven horns and seven eyes, which are the seven spirits of God, sent out into all the earth. And he came and took the book out of the right hand of him who sat on the throne. When he had taken the book, the four living creatures and the twenty-four elders fell down before the lamb, each one holding a harp and golden bowls full of incense, which are the prayers of the saints. And they sang a new song, saying, 'Worthy are you to take the book and to break its seals; for you were slain and purchased for God, with your blood men from every tribe and tongue and people and nation. You have made them to be a kingdom and priest to our God, and they will reign upon the earth.' Then I looked, and I heard the voice of many angels, around the throne and the living creatures and the elders, and the number of them was myriads of myriads and thousands of thousands, saying with a loud voice, 'Worthy is the Lamb that was slain to receive power and riches and wisdom and might and honor and glory and blessing.' And every created thing which is in heaven and on the earth and under the earth and on the sea and all things in them, I heard saying, 'To him who sits on the throne and to the Lamb be blessing and honor and glory and dominion forever and ever.' And the four living creatures kept saying, 'Amen.' And the elders fell down and worshipped." Amen? Oh. So good. So good. So, worship of the Lamb who alone is worthy to open the scroll. So in chapter five, the focus moves from God, enthroned in heaven and surrounded by adoring and worshiping elders and living creatures, to the Lamb who alone is worthy to open the scroll of destiny. The worship of God for his role in creation gives way to the worship of the Lamb for his work of redemption. So Revelation five is often interpreted as depicting the enthronement of the Lamb, based on the assumption that the text reflects the pattern of ancient enthronement ritual. It reflects a pattern of ancient enthronement ritual. Others have argued that Revelation five is modeled after the tradition of a commission in the heavenly court, sometimes combining the two patterns. The view argued in this commentary from on, Commentary on Revelation, A U N E, he's a really good scholar, is that it is more appropriate to understand Revelation five as depicting the investiture of the Lamb, based not on ancient enthronement customs and procedures, but rather on the literary adaptation of Daniel seven and Ezekiel one and two. So investiture. So definitions. Enthronement is the coronation of a new ruler. Commission is associated with an appointment to a task. It's like the great commission, right? And then investiture describes the establishment of someone in an office that said person already holds informally. So it's more of like the confirmation of somebody already fulfilling that role. I would honestly lean into all three of these personally. Yes? Oh, sure, sure. Investiture, the definition describes the establishment of someone in an office that said person already holds informally. And so some of you may already kind of be geeking on, be like, oh, Jesus as the angel of the Lord, or the angel of Yahweh, right? I mean, Yahweh's like right-hand man? I don't know if I can say that. And so, but, you know, who has been employed on and been faithful from the beginning, right? The word through which all things have been created. And so just this special place that only Jesus can hold and the only one to be entrusted with a mission, like, you know, coming to earth as a baby and living in fallen humanity, a perfect life, only to be a perfect sacrifice. Right? Hey, good job, you made it through with no sin. Now you get to die a horrible death. Whoa. Only to be resurrected three days later. And what we're catching a glimpse of here is the well-done. The, here's what you have, this is what you received as a result of your faithfulness in carrying this out in the success of your mission. You have a further commissioning, and that is going to be the reclaiming of the earth. It is Jesus leading that charge. Man. I mean, it's big. It's big stuff, right? I mean, that's why, like, four and five set up the rest of the book. It's just so good. Like, this is the stuff that just, it should absolutely change our lives. Like, we're not thinking of Jesus as buddy. He is the one. The one that Yahweh had chosen. The one that Yahweh had chosen to go through and to endure all of this for our redemption, but it doesn't end there. He's leading the charge. He is the only one in the universe and in all reality that we know, in every dimension. He is the only one to break these seals that we're about to read about, right? He is the only one who can break those and bring that judgment and bring that reclamation of the earth. No one else. And this is something that the Father has set aside for his son to do. That's how special Jesus is. That's the Jesus that went to the cross on our behalf. That's the Jesus we claim to be our Lord and Savior. The one that we follow and the one that we bear his name. When we claim to be Christian, that is what we're saying. We are Jesus followers. And that's the challenge. To live in the same faithfulness that the Son of God did. To fulfill the mission that he has called us to. And really, that's, that's kind of the subtle theme throughout Revelation, right? Is the faithfulness of God's people. And it starts here in 5 by highlighting and even bringing to the point of worship the faithfulness of the Son and the effects of that. So good. So, read, read, read chapter 5 every day for a week and see if it changes you, man. That's, use that in evangelism. So, alright, so beginning with verse 1. "So I saw in the right hand of him who sat on the throne, a book written inside and on the back, sealed up with seven seals." Some of you are asking this before. So the word here is actually scroll. The Greek word is biblion, which, oh, that sounds a lot like Bible. You're right. That's right. So the technical term here is epistigraph. Epistigraph. And that's an ancient document written or drawn on both sides. A codex or codices, which is what we think of as a book. They came into use late in the first century. This is most likely a scroll, though. And we also have iconography in the Greco-Roman days of authority figures holding rolled scrolls in their right hand. So just from, of that time, we see images of this. This was something like somebody holding a scroll in a right hand. This is a point of authority or power granting something, or that they hold that power themselves. So basically, what we're talking about here is a scroll, not necessarily a book. "On the right hand of the one seated on the throne is a scroll of unparalleled significance." Now, this is from Mounts. "Filled to overflowing and sealed with seven seals to ensure the secrecy of its decrees. It contains the full account of what God in his sovereign will has determined as the destiny of the world. Once again, the background is Ezekiel, where in chapter 2, a book of lamentations with words written on both sides is handed to the prophet." So Ezekiel, chapter 2, verses 9 and 10. "Then I looked, and I saw a hand stretched out to me. In it was a scroll, which he unrolled before me. On both sides it were written, words of lament and mourning and woe." So the idea of a heavenly book containing the future course of history is reflected in such passages of Psalm 139, verse 16. "All the days ordained for me were written in your book before one of them came to be." In Jewish apocalyptic literature, we read of heavenly tablets that contain all the deeds of men that will be upon the earth to the remotest generations. You can read that in First Enoch, chapter 81, verses 1 and 2, amongst many other passages there.
So one thing that I see here, one of the comments as a reference, is for example, the book or the scroll of Philomen was about, it was one scroll, but it was about 3.75 meters long and about 33 inches wide. So, just for reference, you want to know how big it is. Like, two of these tables together was the book of Philomen.
So Craig Keener points out, "Legal documents were sealed, often with roughly six seals, imprinted with the attestations of the same number of witnesses. So the wax seals would have to be broken to loose the strings beneath them." So think of it being kind of tied up, and then where the string overlaps, a seal, and then it would be pressed by the witnesses. So you would see the insignia of two or three people on that seal. So I wonder who was the witnesses for this one, but anyways. Man, that'd be awesome. So, yeah, "which wrapped the scroll and guaranteed that it had not been opened and thus altered." "This form was used for contract deeds and wills." Contract deeds and wills. "It became increasingly common in Roman documents of the period, and some Palestinian Jewish documents of this sort have been recovered. Scrolls were normally written on only one side of a papier-schied, reserving the outside for the title or address. But this scroll is unusually full and thus written on both sides. The writing side was called the recto, where the fibers were horizontal and easier for writing. The verso was used only when the recto had inadequate space." So although the idea of seven seals is used here, could easily be governed by the symbolic use of the number seven in Revelation, and signifies the absolute inviolability of the scroll. In Daniel 8:26, the prophet is told, "Seal up the vision, for it concerns the distant future," also in Isaiah 29:11. "When the time is fully come, the seals will be removed and history will move swiftly to its consummation." Ah, so just back to reference to the book. "Some scholars have suggested that the scroll of destiny was in the form of a book rather than a papier-scroll. The argument is based primarily on the fact that in the Greek text says, 'It was held upon the right hand of God rather than in his hand.'" "That the expression is no more than an idiom is seen in 20, chapter 20, verse 1, where an angel comes down from heaven with a key and a great chain upon his hand." So that's the only evidence for it being a book, but not really enough to, for, you know, alter the context. So, and move on here. Verse 2. Any questions on verse 1? Yes?
Can you answer my question now about the seals? That there's seven seals, and if it's, if it's a scroll, it's round. And he opened them one at a time. So if he opened the first one, how did they read?
Oh, I see. So, by breaking a seal, oh, yeah. So how were the seals laid on to the scroll?
Right.
Right? How did it seal it? Was it all tied up at the end, where it's just kind of rolled like this? And there's seven seals in front of you? Or is it, actually, do we have the image that we have for, with the, with the scroll itself? David? Do we have the scroll that we use for our cover for Sunday night seminar?
I don't have it pulled up.
I didn't know if we had that handy, because that's actually what illustrates. It's more, instead of just a perfect cylinder, right? Kind of rolling it up like this, it's rolled up more at an angle. And, oh, there it is.
Great.
Thank you. So, I don't know if anybody can see this, but as you break one seal, you actually have access to maybe a foot or two of the document. And then you get to a point where the, you come up to the next seal. You break it, and then you have ex, oh, there it is. Thank you. Thanks, David. Thank you.
That makes more sense.
Yeah.
Because I was trying to figure out how you could have seven seals, and if it was, you know, long, so you wouldn't be able to...
Right, yeah. What, what would it do? You wouldn't be able to see very much. Like, take a little peek in this corner, and then, yeah. So Sherry gets credit for finding this image. Unless there's a problem with copyright, then it's all on me. But, but we chose this because we thought it was a perfect illustration of, you know, the scrolls and the significance for having seven of them and being broken in consecutive order.
And it shows the different seals.
Yeah, right, right. The different images on it. Yep, that's right. So... Yeah. So, yeah, great question. Anybody else? Alright. That's right. That's a very old picture. So, no. Oh my goodness, where did the time go? Verse 2. We'll see how the rest of this semester goes. Week 1, and we're already thrown off. Okay. "So, 'And I saw a strong angel proclaiming with a loud voice, 'Who is worthy to open the book and to break its seals?'" So, "There now appears upon the scene a mighty angel." Gabriel, question mark? We don't have the identity of this angel. "But they call for someone who is worthy to open the scroll and break its seals. A loud voice is needed, because the challenge is sent out to the far reaches of creation." So we'll meet this angelic herald again in chapter 10, verse 1, where he stands astride the sea and shouts out as a lion roaring. And in chapter 18, verse 21, where he cast a boulder the size of a large millstone into the sea, symbolic of the overthrow of Roman might. Just to give a little bit away there. "Since these are the great proclamations of God, the voice of a mighty angel is required. The call is for someone who is worthy to perform the supreme service of bringing history to its foreordained consummation. God himself does not perform this task, but calls for a mediator. Opening the scroll is mentioned before loosening the seals, not because the seals are placed at intervals within the scroll, but because the content of the scroll is of first importance." Verse 3. "And no one in heaven or on the earth or under the earth was able to open the book or to look into it. So the challenge has gone out to all those dwelling throughout the entire creation, and no one is able to accept it." So we have the tripartite division of the universe, heaven, earth, and under the earth, which is also found in Philomen, or I'm sorry, Philippians, chapter 2, verse 10. "Incidentally, in a scene of universal adoration of Christ, and probably stems from the second commandment, which forbids making an idol in the form of anything that is in heaven above or on the earth beneath, or in the waters below." Exodus, chapter 20, verse 4. As used here, it stresses the universality of the proclamation rather than some particular cosmology. "It seems somewhat artificial to make the phrases refer sequentially to angels, living people, and departed spirits, as if when each declines the challenge, hope gradually disappears. In any case, no one is found able to open the book or to look into its contents." Verse 4. "Then I began to weep greatly, because no one was found worthy to open the book or to look into it. It appears that the promise of chapter 4, verse 1, 'Come up here, and I will show you what must take place after this,' is about to be thwarted. Unless the seals are broken and the scroll of destiny unrolled, God's plan for the universe will be frustrated. Hence, the seer breaks out in unrestrained weeping. He wept at the prospect of an indefinite postponement of God's final and decisive action. The universe itself was morally incapable of affecting its own destiny. So loud wailing was normal, normally preserved, normally reserved for intense mourning, such as for a person's death." So, kind of an interesting intersect here. "And one of the elders said to me, 'Stop weeping. Behold, the lion that is from the tribe of Judah, the root of David, has overcome so as to open the book and its seven seals.'" So one of the elders steps forward and tells the seer not to weep. "The scroll will now, will not remain unopened, for there is one, one, who has triumphed and is therefore worthy to break the seals. He is the lion of the tribe of Judah, the root of David." So both of these titles ascribed to Jesus are taken from the common stock of Jewish messianism. The first is from Genesis, chapter 49, verses 9 through 10. So let's go ahead and go to Genesis, chapter 49. 9 and 10. So this is Israel's departing prophecies and blessings over his sons. Can't really, they're not all blessings, so. "Judah is a lion's whelp. From the prey, my son, you have gone up. He couches, he lies down as a lion, and as a lion who dares rouse him up. The scepter shall not depart from Judah, nor the ruler's staff from between his feet, until Shiloh comes, and to him shall be the obedience of the peoples." So from very, very early on, this was held as messianic. And... So we have Judah's final blessing. So side note, lions were also used on Torah shrines, containers which housed law scroll, Torah scrolls in early Jewish art, and were regarded as figures of strength and authority. But the more direct background, the messianic aspect of these verses is in view. "The root of David alludes to Isaiah, chapter 11, verse 1, and verse 10, which suggests the Messiah would come after the Davidic line had been, had seemed, seemed, cut off." The image is also used messianically in later texts. And both these images are combined in the Dead Sea Scrolls. Apocalyptic literature and other texts often include dialogue with heavenly participants in the scenes revealed. So that these verses were interpreted messianically in the first century B.C. is seen in the Testament of Judah, chapter 24, verse 5. "Then shall the scepter of my kingdom shine forth, and from your root shall arise the stem." So the second title is an allusion to Isaiah 11:1. "A shoot will come up from the stump of Jesse, which looks forward to an ideal king of the line of David, who will judge with righteousness and usher in an era of peace." Isaiah 11:1 is quoted as messianic in Romans, chapter 15, verse 12. "So that it is one of the elders who addresses John is of no particular significance. He appears again as an interpreter in chapter 7, verse 13. John is not to weep." John is not to weep, for Christ is conquered once and for all. Paradoxically, this decisive victory over Satan and death has accomplished, was accomplished on the cross. He conquered by an act of total self-sacrifice. The result is that he alone is worthy to open the scroll of destiny, both to reveal and carry out the final dissolution of all forces set in opposition to the eternal kingdom of God." Let me also point out that even within the root of David, the lion of the tribe of Judah, both of these are signifiers of really his ethnicity. Like, think about how interesting it is that both of these very earthly elements are being called up in the throne room of God. You think all of that would have been left behind, right? Like, you know what? That all served for the first coming. We got a whole new bag for the second, right? But that's not what we see. He is being presented, I mean, and even by John's time, there's a huge influx of Gentiles into the church. And I mean, it's not, it's not John to just kind of placate like a Jewish minority by this time. Why would he do that? And he's not serving to isolate the Gentiles in this, right? Because wouldn't he want to present a more universal Christ? But these titles is what present, is what paves the way in introduction to Jesus. And I think that's something to ponder and to meditate on, is that look at how, even in this last book of our Bibles, we're going back to Genesis and even Isaiah to anchor this prophetic fulfillment of Jesus's role. I think that's awesome. So, all right. So we are going to finish off right there with verse five. We will pick up next week in verse six. And we will get through chapter five. Buckle up, we're gonna do it.